Good evening. It's May 21st, 2018. We are past the appointed time. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to inform the public that over on the north wall adjacent to the door is Open Meetings Act is posted for review by the public. And if I could have you at this time, a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to roll call.
Grandquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Dahlketter?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
The next item then is the approval of the full agenda.
Make the motion, Your Honor.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
So that would jump us down to public hearings. Our first public hearing that we have is to consider amendment to section 27-90 of the Official City Code to clarify site triangle restrictions, to amend section 27-342 to specify driveway width requirements, and to include definition and provisions for driveway apron, and to amend sections 27-348 and 27-349 to amend driveway hard surfacing requirements. Val, would you want to start us off, please?
Yes, thank you. This is an ordinance that, some of them that you mentioned are housekeeping cleanup, like the site triangles, but the main issue here is the hard surfacing requirement depth. There's been multiple subcommittee meetings on this over the past year or so, and we were using 75 feet for a waiver until we got this passed fully. And some at the last subcommittee meeting felt 75 was too long, and so we've reduced that in this ordinance to 30 feet from the edge of the hard surfacing that they would be connecting into with a 10-foot minimum width for residential only. We do not have anything in here for commercial or industrial. They would still have the requirement of all the way from the edge of the road to the required parking, but we did put something in there for commercial office industrial to have a minimum width of at least 14 because we did not have any minimum width previously.
Okay. Questions for Val? This is a public hearing. Ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to these proposed changes. If not, then, find the commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 8th, 2018 to consider an amendment to section 2790 of the Official City Code to clarify site triangle restrictions to amend section 27342 to specify driveway width requirements and to include a definition and provision for a driveway apron and to amend section 27348 and 27349 to amend driveway hard surfacing requirements. The Planning Commission approved the amendment on a seven to zero vote with one abstention.
Okay, if there's no other public input, we'd like to close this hearing at this time and then move to item number 28, which is consideration of ordinance number 5546 approving an amendment to section 27-342 to specify driveway width requirements and to include a definition and provisions for driveway apron and amend sections 27-348 and 27-349 to amend the driveway hard surfacing requirements. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, so discussion. I know this is, we started talking about this back in November, I believe, and...
Like I said, probably about a year or so, and then I think Clint pulled things back from 2011 that you've been working on this for a few years, maybe.
Apparently that means we've got the best solution going, so...
Oh, and if anybody, there is one else thing in there that if you're connecting to gravel, you don't have to ask for the waiver anymore. That's part of the code now, too, so that if you're connecting gravel to gravel at that point. But we did put that stipulation in there that said if the road in front of you gets paved, then you have one year to comply with the code, just like we've been doing in the most recent waivers.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one quick question. I don't know if it changed, but was there any changes on materials, whether they have to use, say, asphalt concrete or anything like that, or is that just, has that stayed the same? We just changed the depth or length?
I believe we have asphalt equivalent concrete. Yeah, I don't think we've allowed, like, armor coating or anything to be a hard surfacing if that's what you were looking for.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Other questions, discussion? Not short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 27290 of the Official City Code to clarify site triangle restrictions, to amend section 27342 to specify driveway width requirements, and to include a definition and provision for driveway apron, to amend sections 27348 and 349 to amend driveway hard surfacing requirements, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5546 carries on first reading.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5546 on second and third.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, would you please vote?
While council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5546 carries on second and third.
Okay, that brings us to our next item on the agenda. It's a public hearing at the request of Joan Van Eggman to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to R-2 One and Two Family Residential District on property addressed as 1409 South Second Street. Val, look for you there.
All right, thank you. This is the property that you all gave me direction to contact the property owners to the north and the south of the 1411 South Second Street that passed on first reading here a month or so ago. This is the property to the north that actually connects to the existing R-2 zoning, so that if this passes and then the next one passes, then you wouldn't have the spot zoning. I was not able to get ahold of the person on the very corner. They did not respond to my message, but that is the reason I contacted this person was by your direction to see if we could get that whole side of the block to be R-2, and I believe the applicant is here, too, to say why they wanted to be R-2 also.
Can it is public hearing?
Yeah, the reason I'd like to have it changed...
Could I have you sign in, please? And then I need you to state your, here you go. Everybody's got it.
I'm not used to this.
Then I need you to state your name and address for the records because it's going over the airways, so...
Okay. I'm Joan Van Eggman, and my address is 1409 South Second Street in Norfolk, Nebraska. I've asked to have this zoning changed because I've done a lot of work to my house on the inside, and I want to put up a garage in the next year or so, and I was not aware that with it being industrial insurance, if half of my house was ruined, I couldn't rebuild there, and I've got a lot into it, so that's why I'd like to have it.
Comments from, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there, invite anybody else in the audience who wishes to address this? Any discussion from the board?
Is it, now I see something about the Magda Frau. That's the same people that live right in that area that you're, a month ago, two months ago?
Yep, they are the next-door neighbors to the south of what we're hearing now. Yep.
If there is no other, I would ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 8th, 2018 at the request of Joan Von Eggman to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to R-2 One and Two Family Residential on property at 1409 South Second. The Planning Commission recommends approval on an eight to zero vote.
Any other discussion? If not, would you please vote?
I think we have a consideration.
Yeah, excuse me, I need to close the hearing first. That's where I didn't get far enough along. Moves us to item number 30 then, consideration of ordinance 5547 approving a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to R-2 One and Two Family Residential District on property addressed as 1409 South Second Street.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5547, Your Honor?
Second.
Any discussion? Short title, please?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
No more? Not, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5547 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5547 on second and third.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, would you please vote?
Call all council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5547 carries on second and third.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the regular agenda, and it is a consideration of ordinance number 5529 approving a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial to R-2 One and Two Family Residential on property addressed as 1411 South Second Street. Note that ordinance number 5529 passed on first reading only at the March 19th, 2018 city council meeting, and was tabled at, excuse me, the April 2nd, 2018 city council meeting. Would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would offer for consideration ordinance number 5529 on second reading.
Second.
To pull off the table.
Oh, to pull it off the table, yes.
Second.
Okay. May it moved and seconded that we remove this from the table. Would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, now I would ask for a motion for introduction for second reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion for second reading of ordinance number 5529.
Second.
Thank you. Val, got your name down here, so...
I forgot, we hadn't talked about this yet. Yes, so this is the next-door neighbor to what was just passed, and I said it was passed on first reading only to see if we could get the neighbor so we could get a whole half a block to be R-2, so that it wouldn't be necessarily spot zoning and putting just one little lot of R-2 in I-1. So now that you've passed the previous one, they would then continue down with R-2 if you pass this, and there would just be that one lot at the very corner of Second and Northwestern that would still remain I-1.
I think that's a good move because now we're contiguous instead of some of the other problems that come when we jump things, so... Any other discussion?
The only thing I have to say is I'd like you to keep working on that last one if you can find them, so that we can get it all done one way or the other.
Yep, I will try to contact him again. Yep.
Any other discussion? Yeah, short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5529 carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5529 on third reading.
Second. With that, it moved in second there, there is no discussion on third reading, so would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5529 carries on third reading.
Brings us to the next agenda item, which is consideration of approval of an interlocal agreement for fire service automatic aid in between the City of Norfolk and Hader Rural Fire Protection District. And Scott, I believe you're up.
Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
Now you're up.
Council President Langy and councilmen, thank you for your consideration. Essentially, this is an agreement that's been in place since 2004. There's some language updates in here, and it clarifies the jurisdictional, the reciprocal jurisdictional overlap that we do one to another, not being referenced to a map, specifically speaking to our jurisdiction versus theirs. Those are obviously changing boundaries at times, and so it just speaks to, you know, the clear understanding that our jurisdiction is available to them and vice versa, so we want to make that known to them. It's important for us to share resources and provide a timely response to one another should emergency occur, so this solidifies that. In addition, ISO, which comes to the community to evaluate our community risk, to set insurance premium ratings, looks highly on these type of agreements. Geographically, you have to reside within a five-mile window from boundary to boundary, so not everybody can be a candidate for that, but this automatic agreement simply works with all the criteria that ISO sets for jurisdictional proximity with Hader, and so it benefits our rate payers by having this agreement. They have a formula by which they determine the resources that you will throw at any structural fire alarm and do with engine companies, the manpower that associated with that, and so we benefit from having Hader attached to us and vice versa reciprocally, they would benefit from us. So it's a great agreement to have, to share resources and assist one another in our time of need, and it also bolsters our insurance rating. So it's a good partnership that's been in place for a long, long time. This is simply an agreement that re-solidifies that with some updates and some language clarification, so would respectfully ask the council's favorable consideration if you're all inclined to do so.
Scott, does this have a timeframe when we have to look at it again, or is this, and I didn't read through it?
Great question. I know that it has an opt-out clause.
It continues until terminated.
Mr. Clint, I don't know, you are a great help.
I think it just had, you could terminate it with a, that's a short, relatively short period of time to terminate it, but I don't think it expires in five years.
That's what I was getting at, it doesn't have a sunset on it, so, which is good.
Right, we met with the administrative folks over at Hader. They had their governing body, being the Rural Fire Protection District, is their president signed off on the agreement, and then it's up to us to work out the logistical details with them in our dispatch center to deal with those structural fire alarms that we want to have that immediate notification done, to get those resources running. And there'll be times when we're sending resources en route and could be canceled because the fire doesn't materialize to the need to justify that, the full trip over there or vice versa, but we'll handle those on a case-by-case basis. But it begins with the premise, we're getting resources on the road, getting them on the road quickly and efficiently, so we can get ahead of that fire curve. So it's, you know, its intentions are good and honorable. How many times it'll be fully exercised, we'll know as we look back. It doesn't get exercised often now, simply because we don't have that many large fire events. If you think about the large apartment complex fire on Benjamin Avenue, Hader was here in a timely manner and provided great support for us, likewise with Battle Creek and all our other mutual aid partners. So we have a great working relationship with them, they provide a great service to us, and because of the unique proximity of Hader, we get to have kind of a specific agreement within our blanket mutual aid agreement with them just based on proximity, and so it works to support one another, and the additional byproduct of that is the benefit we get for ISO and establishing those as low as insurance premiums as we can for our consumers. So it's a good win-win, we feel, and just would like your support in approving that and carrying forward.
I think the specific question to the termination is that paragraph 15 talks about this agreement terminates with written notice at any time. You still have the basic interlocal mutual...
Mutual aid agreement, yes.
Mutual aid agreement includes Hader as well.
With all our other partners in Elkhorn Valley.
So even if this was terminated, it just kind of terminates that for the ISO purposes and so on and so forth, it doesn't affect the mutual aid agreement that involves Hader and a number of others.
Yeah, Elkhorn Valley's surrounding, yes, you're absolutely right.
So Chief, we have interlocal agreements with what other communities? With Battle Creek, with Stanton?
We have a mutual aid agreement with all the members of the Elkhorn Valley Mutual Aid, so that would certainly include Madison, Battle Creek, Stanton, Hoskins, you know, even a broader reach, it gets to Windside and beyond, so there, you know, those partners are all, you know, deeply entrenched in that Elkhorn Valley Mutual Aid Agreement. Yeah, I thought the 13, 16?
13, let's stick to that one. 11?
Yeah, that's a, I don't have that.
So are those interlocal agreements or just mutual aid or combination?
That's a broader mutual aid agreement. We don't have this specific agreement with anybody except Hader, simply because they're the only one geographic that resides within that five-mile window proximity, so we can't exercise it with anybody else. But we do have the broader agreement that this body has embraced in the past for the larger group.
Right. Thank you very much.
Well, I think the big thing that's really important for everybody to understand is that this helps us all on our ISO rating, and our ISO rating comes back to when you pay your house insurance, what level and rate you're at that way, so...
Certainly. We just had a recent review, it'd been about five years since they've been in town. Mayor Moaning and Andy will be receiving written confirmation of that soon, in the coming weeks. It went very, very well. They were very favorable in their review of us, and I know unofficially they would tell us that we strengthened our position significantly, gained a bunch of additional points, which is always nice to hear, exactly what that score will be, is yet to be determined, but we left with a very good feeling about his review and evaluation, which includes our water department, our dispatch center, you know, it's much bigger than just us, so it's a true community partnership. So I'm pleased with our preliminary findings. I hope that the official report that the mayor gets will solidify that here very, very soon, so...
Taxpayers benefit because, you know, we got lower rates because of that, so would a Class 1 city that has a volunteer department, would they generally be charged more for their insurance rates?
Um...
Because of man hour, you know, manpower and number of units and...
Yeah, I mean, you know, they grade you on so many elements that the manpower part of it's difficult to produce sometimes, you know, the, I believe when we were first given the Class 2 rating, originally we were 1 of 2. I believe there's 12 of those now in the state of Nebraska. There's one Class 1, and that's Grand Island. They recently received a Class 1 rating, so they're the only one in Nebraska that I'm aware of. I believe Sioux City just got a 1 here in recent months, but the formula that they use describes the amount of personnel you can throw at that structural fire alarm on a do-in response within a certain response time, and so it's difficult to calculate that. It's a little harder to difficult, to consistently calculate that in a volunteer setting because you're not assured of those personnel being there at the time of the alarm. Are they able to get away from work? Are they in town at the time of that versus having a set number on shift, on duty, in the building at any given time? So the challenge is, they look at your last year's worth of data, and they want to see what your responses were to past fire alarm conditions in structural buildings, and because the infrequency of those, it's difficult to get good examples where you have, you know, a lot of manpower on any given time. The apartment house fire happened to be one of those where there was a great response, a timely response. There just aren't a lot of those large-scale events to draw from for your comparisons or the examples that they seek out when they're doing their evaluation. So, I mean, it's a great problem to have from a fire risk standpoint. You don't want to have lots to pull those examples from, and we hope that we can continue to thwart those off, but the formula that they use is calculates differently for a volunteer service than it does for paid. They have this specific formula that grades you based on what your conditions are. So we describe to them the ratio of full-time staff we have compared to our reserve forces that are treated as volunteers, and they do the math from there. They use their calculations to plug those into their formula and come with what they call a divergence rating on how many people we can throw at any given call, at any given time in a consistent manner. And so that coupled with the high occupancy exposures in the building, coupled with our water flow at those high-risk exposure facilities, they actually go out and take examples of our water flow at hydrant, at those what they would call high-hazard locations or high-volume flow calculations. It's all plugged into a formula that they use to do that. The dispatch center's part of that, how we're notified, do we have a backup system to notify, you know, what's the method of alerting all your people simultaneously, and if that system fails, what's the backup system? They use all kinds of methods to determine the likelihood and the frequency at which you're going to deliver lots of people and lots of water to any given fire situation that's a high-risk condition. So it's a fairly complicated process that they do, and all we can really do is provide them our training records, our personnel records, our equipment maintenance records, and our fire responses, and they review them and give us a score. So we're just, as I said, we just finished that process and are waiting for confirmation on what we're going to get. So I'll certainly be able to know more about that, councilman, here soon, and glad to share that report with all of you if you'd like it, so...
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Not, that brings us to vote time. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
The next item that we have is consideration of approval of an engineering service contract with JEO Consulting Group for the design and reconstruction of Roch Avenue from First Street to Fifth Street for an amount of $394,300. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Steve, you want to start off with the discussion on this, or give us all the background?
Chairman and council members, this would be the contract with JEO for the design portion of Roch Avenue from First Street over to Fifth Street. The total contract is about 16.5 percent, a little bit higher than what we would typically see for design services on a project. As a function of that, I did have a breakout within the contract, some of the non-kind of standard pieces, particular project based on its location to our downtown area, and some of the synergies that we want to have with the Johnson Park area, as well as just the greater downtown. There'll be a fairly reasonable public outreach portion. Well, we've got about a dozen stakeholders that we've identified that we will engage in the design... in the design process, and then also to capture just general public information. The public outreach portion is important in a project like this, and there is a cost associated with that that's kind of non-typical. The other piece that's fairly substantial in here compared to the the general size of the project is the traffic engineering study that we that we're looking at. Again, as a function of the location to this corridor, to the downtown area, to our First Street corridor, we're looking at a traffic study here that would really look at that Madison Avenue to Prospect and about First over to Sixth, and do some traffic counts, some turn movement counts, and look at how traffic is flowing through this area. We also have a lot of public services in that area, so we want to be sure that we make the right decisions from traffic lanes as we start to talk about complete streets, which is, you know, the the portion of the streets and bicycle facilities and pedestrian facilities. We want to start to engage in that kind of conversation as we look to build out our public infrastructure and make sure that our streets aren't just accommodating vehicles, but our streets are accommodating accommodating the people that use the streets, whatever mode of transportation that they choose to use. And we want to make sure they're safe for for the pedestrians as well as the traffic. So that traffic piece is a little bit more substantial than you would see probably in a typical project. So in the public outreach and that traffic piece really added a little bit to the fees here, but I think it's the right project in the right location to justify those analysis and and the public outreach. Any questions?
I don't, I don't really have a question, but I was just going to comment that you've answered some of my questions. There's only five blocks here, we're doing about eighty thousand per block, and two of those streets don't even go through. And it just seemed high to me, but I I understand what you're saying. But what's an average street, let's say, this is about eighty thousand a street, a block? How, what's an average?
I would say eleven percent construction is probably going to be fairly.
More than?
Ten to twelve is not a normal or untypical. Obviously, the the larger the value of the construction goes up, usually the smaller the percentage is for design services. The other piece that stands out here is is there's going to be kind of a modified drainage study. We know we have a lot of flooding in this area. We, and what I expressed to the designers as we were interviewing was, for me, project failure is going to be if we build this thing and we still have flood issues. Now, I know we got the zone over there, they expressed during significant events, water's actually coming in the back door, and there's areas of the facility they can't use. So we want to be sure we understand what's causing the issue, and then look at how we address that issue as a function of design.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, discussion?
I would also, just just one other thing on this. Because of the the location of this project to city, to the city, City Hall here with our engineering staff, we will use in-house staff for construction administration on this project. It'll be a great, a great opportunity for our young staff engineer to kind of really dig into a well-designed project. I'm sure JEO's going to do a great job there, and as far as his his growth and development as an engineer and prepping to take his engineering exam here in a few years, this would be a very good project for him to work on through that construction management process. And both the assistant city engineer and I have quite an extensive background in that, and we'll be able to tutor him through any issues that might develop. So kind of taking an opportunity of that, too, to, so we'll be saving that portion. Construction services portion of this was just a, you know, ten, fifteen grand, as I remember, some construction staking and so forth. So again, a good opportunity for us to save a little bit of money and and do some do some training with our staff.
Other questions? Not, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
The next item brings us to consideration of approval of ordinance number five-five-four-eight, annexing a tract of land generally located along South Victory Road and Highway thirty-five in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-five Township twenty-five North. Range one west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Madison County, Nebraska. Would note before we have the motion to open this that this is an annexation situation, so we can only pass on the first reading if we decide to pass. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, Steve, do you want to open the discussion on this?
Sure. This is a about a twenty-four and a half acre parcel of land. It sits east of Victory Road, west of Highway thirty-five. It's in that East Bluff and East Grove Avenue area. The current owners of the property are Dan and Connie Gary. The property is currently under a contract for purchase by DP Management, and they're looking at developing this into approximately a hundred and sixty multifamily units. The letter of request was submitted by DP Management, and consent has been also provided by Dan and Connie Gary for the annexation. Glad to answer, any questions you have about the annexation or what they're planning to do?
So the good thing is that the annexation goes in before the construction starts, and so we pick up the extra one and a half percent sales tax.
Yes.
Plus, it's also a piece that I I think is kind of surrounded by.
It is, you know, there's, we will need to do some water and sewer extension that is currently north of this on the east east side of Highway thirty-five at the at the other larger-scale apartment complex. We'll need to extend water sewer services down, and we've got a couple areas over there, that area East Bluff at East Grove that has been within city limits for some time but not served by city services. So this is an opportunity to provide, start to provide them some city services.
Other questions, discussion? If not, Beth, you have a short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said track city a tract of land lying wholly in the north half of the southwest quarter of Section twenty-five Township twenty-four North, Range one, west of the six P M, Madison County, Nebraska.
Would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five, forty-eight carries on first reading only.
That brings us then to administrative reports, and we have the police division's April and year-to-date activity report, Chief, or somebody else to do that?
There were two reports that were in your packet. One is just comparing the month of April from this year to the month of April the previous year, just to kind of show any changes that happened. The other one is a year-to-date report that shows where we're at, April of this year, compared to where we were April of last year for the calendar year. Criminal reports remained exactly the same for the two periods. We saw an increase in traffic-related reports, but they were primarily traffic complaints that officers responded to. Our accidents were slightly down from where we were a year ago at this time. We did have one fatality this year that we had none last year, so we did see an increase there. Overall, our calls for service were up about point eight percent, just under one percent. That includes service calls and and a variety of other things. On the enforcement side, we saw a decrease in the amount of criminal enforcement, about a ten percent decrease in arrests. We saw about a twenty-six percent decrease in traffic enforcement, and we saw overall about twenty-two, almost twenty-three percent decrease in enforcement, the four months of this year compared to the four months of the previous year. And that's where we're at.
Questions? Would like to note also that we floored two new officers, I believe?
Yes, we did.
Oh, time flies, I think it was about three weeks ago.
Yes, they're down in the academy right now, and they are doing very well, so, but they still have a long ways to go, about thirteen weeks yet. And we are currently in the process of of doing background checks on additional applicants. So at some point in time, we're hopeful to get caught back out.
Where are we at as far as numbers?
Well, with the two that are in the academy now, that leaves us just five officers down.
Any other questions?
Just five. Percentage-wise, that seems kind of high. Five, you're five down, still, you're saying?
We were seven, we hired the two, now down five. I used to have a captain, years and years ago, that I worked for, and we'd come in and somebody called in sick, and he would be complaining, we'd be complaining and griping about having to fill in the slack and pick up the slack, and he would always tell us, gentlemen, when you got good people, you don't need many. How could we argue with that? And I think this community is blessed with the fact that we still have a lot of very good officers and personnel who are out there working to help pick up that slack. And they spend a lot more time on calls now than they did on random patrol because it's taking up more of their time. So that kind of impacts traffic enforcement, that impacts some of the things that they're able to do that they normally could do just in routine patrol. They don't have as much time. If you look down at the bottom there where it says mileage, a year ago, we had almost a hundred and twelve thousand miles, vehicle miles, and the current year, we've got just over a hundred thousand. So there's almost twelve thousand miles less being traveled and driven out there on patrol, primarily because they're spending more and more time handling calls and not actually out doing the patrolling. But we're working to get that shored up, and we hopefully will have that taken care of in the near future.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, and please relay our thanks to all the officers that are working for citizens.
Be happy to do that, thank you.
That, I believe, brings us to the end of our agenda. Motion of the chairman?
I'll make the motion.
We are adjourned.
I took the second, how's that?